...thirteen regular village board meeting for the Village of Indian Head Park. Would you please call the board?
Trustee Schmacher. Trustee Wall. Here. Trustee Bailey.
Here.
Trustee Henshaw.
Here.
We have a call, Mr. Mayor.
Please stand with five.
...to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business in the mayor's report, I have just a couple of quick items and followed by a guest speaker. First item I have is the announcement that Illinois Tollway has launched a mobile website for I-Pass customers. You can check their website, world wide web dot Illinois Tollway dot com and click on the mobile I-Pass management icon and that way you'll be able to manage your accounts with the Tollway. Another thing is hopefully nobody in our town has this situation, but if you are or know somebody who is and may want to pass along that the Illinois Housing Development Authority has a program called Illinois Foreclosure Prevention and it's Illinois Foreclosure Prevention Network. The point of me bringing it up is that they have an auction that they have called the Illinois Harvest Tip Program where people can apply for some help with respect to their mortgages and the application deadline is September 30, 2013. So the flyer looks like this, there's several on the counter outside the window there if you're interested and you want to stop by during business hours and pick some up. Last meeting, there was a question we had discussed in June about 65th Street and on the board's direction, I wrote a letter to the township and there was a question that I heard back, I had not as of July. I had followed up with them and I was informed that they are still working on it and they will get us an official response in the near future. Tonight with the consent agenda, we have approval of the motor fuel tax resolution. This allows us to appropriate and spend money for, from the motor fuel tax funds for street maintenance. We are appointing Dennis Shemerhorn as chairman again, planning and zoning and an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Title 12 entitled Streets, Sidewalks and Public Places to regulate park hours at the Village of Indian Head Park Municipal Code and that's the ordinance that we discussed at length at the last meeting, initiative from trustee O'Laughlin concerning regulation of park hours and this covers the parkland around the Heritage Center, Sacagawea Park and Arrowhead Memorial Point. That's all I have to say at this time about agenda matters, so I would like to introduce our local fire chief, Kevin Doyle, from the Pleasant View Fire Protection District. And Kevin, you were here to talk to us about the ISO ratings, but before you get into your presentation, would you be kind enough to introduce the dignitaries you brought along with you tonight?
Absolutely. First is our board presidents, Mr. James Gay and our resident trustee Frank Smith.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you gentlemen for coming out. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, and the village board. I just wanted to come out, I believe you had mentioned something to the board members potentially in the past regarding a lowering of the fire department's ISO rating. And what an ISO rating is, in February, I'm sorry, in October of 2012, ISO which is Insurance Services Office rates over forty-five thousand fire departments nationwide. In October of 2012, they came out, did a week-long investigation inspection of our entire fire departments, which ranges from our ability to handle emergency calls, dispatch emergency calls, our fire department operations, which is they look at all our stations, they look at our personnel, they look at how we respond to calls, what type of calls we respond to. And after that week-long inspection, they take about six months, they develop a report and they assign a rating, again, to all forty-five thousand fire departments across the entire country. We improved our rating to a Class Two. ISO rates fire departments from a Class One being the absolute best to a Class Nine. We are a Class Two, which puts us in the top 1.2 percent of all fire departments nationwide. So there are only 550 departments out of five, or I'm sorry, out of forty-five thousand that scored better than we did across the whole country. So we're going to each community that we serve and officially letting the board and the citizens know that, you know, we're trying our absolute best and that's evident in this recent reduction that we saw. So we're going to be putting a newsletter out that's giving some details about that. Some business owners and even some homeowners may receive a reduction in their insurance rating and that's dependent on the individual insurance companies and, you know, the type of business and how paid, so, you know, it's a little bit different for every company, but we're mailing a newsletter out and in that newsletter is a form letter that you can fill out some details about your address, your policy number and some other things, mail it off to your insurance companies, they'll review it and then they'll inform the individual policy holders while they're not, they'll receive a reduction. So that's great news as far as reduction, but even more so than that, really, I mean, it was a terrific weather and our entire organization's cap to be considered in the top 1.2 percent of every fire department in the entire country, so.
We're happy to have you as our fire protection district. And I'd like to ask... For you, Chief, and for yours.
Thank you very much. Forty percent of our rating is based on available water supply. We cover six different communities and each individual public works department or water department work very closely with us on two solid days out of the five that they were out here. So as you can imagine, if it makes up forty percent of your score, you know, if that forty percent moves in one way or another, we potentially would not have achieved the Class Two. So part of the other reason why I'm here is to, I realize that Ed's not here, but we had a nice little luncheon for all the local water departments. But I have a certificate, a framed certificate, that I would like to present to the board for your Department of Public Works because the reality is, when you look at the total score that we have, had we not done as well in each individual area, water supply being one of them, we would not have achieved the Class Two. We could not have done so well in the water supply area without the hard work of every local Department of Public Works, including Ed and members of the Indian Head Park Department of Public Works. So with that, I'd like to read this briefly and present it to you. I left my glasses, but I think I can answer this. This is a community partner award given to the Indian Head Park Department of Public Works. This award is given in recognition of your extraordinary efforts in assisting the Pleasant View Fire Protection District in attaining an ISO public protection Class Two. Without your hard work and collaborative efforts, we would have not achieved this notable distinction. Our success is owed in great part to the commitment and dedication of the Indian Head Park Department of Public Works. From our entire organization and every citizen we serve, thank you. So this is for Ed of the Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Bring it over.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed. Thank you.
Our chief to pass along the appreciation of the residents and the village board to Ed and the public work people for all they do and in particular with assisting with the water supply rating for the park district. Thanks, Chief. That is, if I can ask, I think you had sent over a copy of that letter that's going to go in your mailing?
Yes, and it's, the one we'll be mailing out is a little bit different and has more information because as you can imagine, when you are on the inside, you don't think about things like where the closest fire station is, so you take for granted that everyone knows exactly where the closest fire station is, but obviously in your town, depending on, you know, depend where you live, on the south half, it may be the station on Wolf Road and maybe the state, so we included some additional information, you know, to help people where the closest firehouse is, the closest fire hydrant potential. There's some information they'll have to gather, but very little information, so.
All right, great. Well, this week, as I had mentioned to you previously, we had talked about this at our July board meeting and trustee Walch had suggested putting a letter on the web, on our website that people could use to contact their insurance companies with respect to the classification too and in fact ask for connected discount.
Yes.
As it turns out, I think you're input, this is more the appropriate letter for them to use, so.
I will, I will send you the updated letter.
When we get that, then that would be something, would you have any objection for us to post it on the website that our residents could copy or download?
Absolutely. Sure, no problem whatsoever.
That'd be great, thank you.
I had contacted my insurance companies.
Yes.
After our last meeting and they had said, wow, that's great, and looked on some type of common insurance system.
Yes.
And they had said that the rating had not been changed on the system, that I need to send them the letter. So is that common that, I mean, would you normally have it on the common database so they wouldn't?
Well, it's not our database, it's theirs and what they do is they disseminate it to insurance companies nationwide, so there's a possibility that your insurance company, because as you can imagine, these things, there's a little bit of a lag, but on the letter from the estates, you know, the effective date of the lowering of our, what's called the PPC or Public Protection Class rating, took effect on June 24th of this year, so that letter signed by me will be sufficient for your insurance company.
Thank you.
And if you don't mind, I mean, my email address is on there, you know, please email me and let me know what the outcome was because, you know, I would love to promise everyone a huge discount, but it depends on the insurance company. Some insurance companies are more willing, I suppose, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anything else, trustees? Okay, next matter is the consent agenda and before I entertain a motion with respect to that, as I said earlier, my intent tonight is to reappoint Dennis Shemerhorn to the Planning and Zoning Commission as chairperson. If you recall, last year Dennis was tapped to the vacant trustees position and was chairman at that time. It's previously discussed, just happened to be in passing with Noreen Castello, who's the current member and chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and she suggested to me that if it was my intent to restore Dennis to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which I said it was, she said she would like to step down his chair and ask that I reappoint Dennis as the chairperson. And I confirmed that with her the other day and she sent an email and that I'll read as follows. Dear Rich, in view of the fact that Dennis Shemerhorn will be reappointed to the Planning and Zoning Board, I request that this time that he be reappointed as chair. If he agrees, then I would like to resign as chair. I reaffirm my commitment as commissioner. Thank you, we look forward to having Dennis back on our board. So the thing here with the reappointment of Dennis to the Planning and Zoning Commission as chairman is that Noreen is not resigning from the commission, she is just giving up the chair position and will continue in her current term on that committee. I previously said we have the motor fuel tax resolution, that trustees have received previously and the ordinance regarding the park hours. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I will make the motion to approve the consent agenda. However, I would ask that the ordinance Title 12, entitled Streets, Sidewalks and Public Places, be removed, we can set agendas, we can have some discussion about that, please. With that, one amendment, I would ask that the other two amendments be included, we can set agenda and approve. So I will make that motion.
Okay, then we will move the ordinance amending Title 12 and make that the very first agenda item and then that leaves the motor fuel tax resolution and appointment of Dennis Shemerhorn as chairman on the consent agenda. And we have a motion to that effect made by trustee Walch, is there a second?
A second.
Second by trustee O'Laughlin, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
Okay, and can you, the chair, the ayes have it and the motion carries. One, one no vote. Approval, the next item is the approval of the financial report for the month ending June 30, 2013. Treasurer Dusa is personal business tonight, so I would ask that you present that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The financial report for the month of June 2013, revenues $393,999.58, expenditures $361,056.8, and on June 30, 2013, the village across all contact funds totaling $1,353,734.40. That's the report.
Thank you. Trustees, any questions or comments? Trustee Henshaw?
I'm sorry, I've got a few questions in the new guy learning mode. I know we had put some of this information online, is all this online, what we've been given? Is that something we can?
We were putting the warrant list up.
We put the warrant list up there now.
Okay.
But we haven't put that either.
We haven't.
Is there a reason why we couldn't do that? Is that something we would consider?
You know, after the board meeting that you pulled.
Thank you. I'll keep going unless...
No, go ahead.
There's, under Bank Reconciliation, the State Bank of Countryside, I believe is the SPOC, in the middle, there's a bond account, the $245,000. Can you tell me what that account is, please?
That account is what we use to pay the 2009 general obligation bonds. We've been, since the increase in the principal, it is hitting this year from about $16,000 to $100,000, somewhere around there. That's, the revenue that goes into that account is from the cell towers and in the budget, you'll also see we make a transfer out of the general fund into that fund of, and not just a fund transfer, annual cash transfer, transfer every year into that account to ensure we can pay our 2009 general obligation bonds.
Thank you. There's two registers in the packet that we give, 736 and 737. What are the differences in those two?
In the way they look, you mean?
You know, why are they different?
Well, they're all the check runs, 736 is the check run from June 7, 737 is the check run from June 10.
All right, same data, just a cutoff point.
It's one, every time, every time I run checks, this is the last, or somewhere in the middle, this report prints. Since we started doing it this way, I believe I came up with the easier and more concise way with more information way of doing it. I had to scan in register 736. I have since realized, after I did 736, there's a way to print it out, also making a file we email to you and I'll download from the website smaller than scanning them and that's why they look different. July and February will all look like register 737.
All right, thank you. I only have two left.
Andrew.
On 736, there's a, the Bank of New York balance, first penny clock down on 450th page three.
Yes.
What is that?
That would be the interest for the bond issued.
Thank you. And then last question on 737, page two, there's a payment for $4,318 to Rich Andrews.
Yes, that is for the reimbursement of at least 10 months of the health care and liquor.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Further? Chair would entertain a motion to approve the financial report of June, as of June 30, 2013, as presented by Mr. Frank.
I make the motion?
Moved by trustee Henshaw, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Schnafer, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can you, the chair, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next item is the approval of board meeting minutes for the special board meeting of June 27, 2013. Are there any changes or additions in any of the first three pages? Pages four or five? Six or seven? Eight, nine, or 10? Eleven or 12? Thirteen? Fourteen? Hearing none, chair would entertain a motion to approve the special board meeting minutes for June 27, 2013, as presented. Moved by trustee Schnafer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Wittenberg, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can you, the chair, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next seven minutes is from the regular board meeting of July 11, 2013. Are there any changes or additions to page three? Page four or five? Six or seven? Eight? Nine or 10? Page 11 or 12? Thirteen or fourteen? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes for July 11, 2013.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Walch, is there a second? Second by trustee Schnafer, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can you, the chair, the ayes have it, motion carries. Minutes of July 11, 2013 are approved. And that takes us to the agenda items. First item being the ordinance 2013-8, removed from the consent agenda at the request of trustee Walch. This is amending Title 12 to all the titles, Streets, Sidewalks and Public Places to regulate park hours at the Village of Indian Head Park Municipal Code.
And Mr. Mayor, myself and trustee O'Laughlin were speaking prior to the board meeting and noticed passing error in this ordinance. First error, I don't believe that we voted on the Heritage of Indian Head Park. So there was discussion as to whether to do that. I don't think the board ever came to a resolution on that issue until we discuss it something in the future. I could be wrong, but I believe that the Heritage Center should have been included in this ordinance.
And we had some discussion, it's, 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 your point is not, it's not concerning that we have named it as Heritage Center Park, as the ordinance goes to public use of the parklands surrounding the area.
That is correct. And I'm not saying opposed of it, but looking back at the minutes and talking with trustee Walch, I don't believe that we had that form of discussion as to how we were going to designate the property next to Heritage Center.
In the minutes that we approved on page 12, it says that near the bottom.
Then, you know, and that's fine, since we have now this as a discussion item, we can visit it, if we wanted to amend this ordinance.
Certainly.
Okay. So having, having that background to it is, as I, as I read it, we were talking, the ordinance, the amendment would go to the use of the open land, so perhaps we should, one suggestion I would have, there's a couple of ways we can delete this section. Secondly, we can take 12.07.010 park hours and we worded to say no public use of the open land surrounding the Heritage Center. And that leaves open the issue about is it a park or not, it just regulates the open land. So those are the two that come to my mind, if anybody has any opinion on that.
Well, I think there's two issues. I mean, the first issue we discussed at last meeting, I believe Mr. Metz brought it up, with regard to the gate and the Heritage Center, so, you know, if we're going to designate that a park, and I'm not saying we should or should not, as Mr. Stowe said, are we going to allow public parking in that Heritage Center, you know, from sunrise to sunset? Or are we not? And then second of all, are we going to designate the land next to it as part of Heritage Center or again designate it as a separate park? I don't think we need to have a discussion about it.
I would ask, how do, what have we designated today? That land?
As I said, I think we just consider it as open land surrounding the Heritage Center building. I've always viewed it as the Heritage Center and not bifurcating building and parking lot and the open lot next door, but that obviously was something we looked at last time because trustee Walch requested, suggested, we talked about it last time and I can recall that we had intended whether or not it would be a park or what to call it, but we left that for a future date. So we could actually, just delete this section, correct?
You're sure?
Vote 107 and vote on the ordinance amending Chapter 12 to, amend Chapter 12 with the inclusion of, the amendment says listed in chapter, the proposed 12.05 and 12.06 and the 12.07.
Question, I have another question. And Sec. 12, 12.05.030, would the alcoholic beverages permit required? Currently on the website, it says no alcoholic beverages for an Black Hawk Park as well as in Sec. 12. Now, and this wasn't mentioned at a previous meeting, so I'm just trying to get a better, more information on, when you say alcoholic beverage permit required, how much is the permit? I mean, because there was never any discussion on that at the last meeting.
The code already has that, it's not been amended, it's just been reprinted to show you what the code contained prior to the amendment. The only part that was changed was the first section, 12.05.010. It originally read, "No public use of Sacagawea Park shall occur after dusk and before dawn." So what was added was changing the words dusk to sunset, changing the word dawn to sunrise and then inserting the phrase, including but not limited to Kelly's Playground. That's the only change to that section, the rest of the section is already listed.
Because I, unfortunately, we just received this on Tuesday, so I didn't have an opportunity to go back and forth, but I did work on the website and it does say no alcoholic beverages, so, yeah, I filed up the parts, so that's where the confusion came in.
And I think we probably need to update the website to be consistent with the ordinance that it says.
Yeah, that's, I'm not even, and that location really hasn't existed many years ago, so I'm not sure.
My recollection of use of the parks, like Black Hawk Park for example, over time is that, other than our interest in allowing that soccer program for the young kids to be using the open land at the Heritage Center, we typically haven't allowed outside private parties, residents or otherwise to use any of the parks for events. The village has had, over time, and most recently was the 50th anniversary party in 2009, and we had a beer truck there, so we authorized ourselves to have alcoholic beverages at the, at the park. As I would understand it, council tried me, but this gives us the right to do that, but that's not been practiced.
Council, can you tell me what code we're modifying? What was that ordinance number? 2010?
No, the village code, as it existed, already has Chapter 12.05, yeah, 12.05 already exists. And the only amendment to Chapter 12.05 was in Section 12.05.010 related to park hours. That's the only section that was changed.
And that existing village code, 12.05, is that online? Can we see that? Is it possible maybe in the future, if we're getting something that's modifying, we can see the original or what we're modifying? If I'm understanding it right, we're changing some of what we got was this and so I was confused what the original was and I didn't have time to come in. I've been out of town since I got this, so I don't know how hard it is to do that, but I'm asking. So I don't know how hard it is to do that, but I'm asking.
Actually, when the ordinance comes over, it's redlined and you, I don't know if you're familiar with Word, but you can toggle to the view of either showing the markups or not showing the markups.
I think we get a PDF.
So we are...
No, when you convert, but when you convert it to...